Fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of Ealing City for the year 2020. We apply certain limited procedures to the management discussion and analysis and schedules for budget to actuals by fund for the general fund and each major special revenue fund and schedules related to pensions and other personal employment benefits, which are required supplemental information that supplements the basic financial statements. Our procedures consisted of inquiries and management regarding the methods of preparing the information and preparing the information for consistency with management's responses to our inquiries, the basic financial statements, and other knowledge we obtained during our audit of the basic financial statements. We did not audit the required supplementary information and do not express an opinion or provide any assurance of the RSI or course of supplemental information. We're engaged to report on various schedules for budget to actuals by fund, which accompany the financial statements but are not RSI. With respect to the supplemental information, we made certain inquiries of management and evaluated the form, content, and methods of preparing the information to determine that the information complies with the accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. The method of preparing it has not changed from a prior period, and the information is appropriately complete in relation to our audit of the financial statements. We compare and reconcile the supplementary information to the underlying account records used to prepare the financial statements or the financial statements themselves. The information is intended solely for the use of the Ealing City Council and the management of the Ealing City and is not intended to be and should not be used for any other purposes or other than these parties. An audit of finance statements includes consideration of internal control or financial reporting as a basis for determining audit procedures that are appropriate in the circumstances but not for the purposes of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of the internal control of the financial reporting. There is also an internal control report on page eighty-seven of the audit, also expressing that we do not express an opinion. In regards to state compliance, we tested certain areas of the state compliance as detailed in our report on page eighty-nine in accordance with NRS three fifty-four dot six two four. This report describes the scope of our testing and is not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the city's compliance with the state requirements. And as you may have noted, and it probably has been discussed before, there was a binding, and it sounds like they guys had a drastic in regards to the trust fund. Oh, okay. So kind of a brief summary to that, the landfill trust requires state or federal appointed trustee, and I guess I kind of spoke through that the trustee was one of the members of the city rather than a member of the state or federal. So I think you guys addressed that by changing that to a bank. All right, well.
Have we addressed that? Is that just?
We will. I've got to change about it today. So basically, it was my understanding that the bank was in charge of it and that I was just the person that could tell the bank when the requirements were met, but that's not how it reads on the trust agreement that we got written out. It reads that I'm the trustee and I can't be the trustee. So we just, I talked to Shane, I will have him look at it and get it rewritten so it specifically states the banks and the trustee, not myself.
Okay. Let's see. Matters to be communicated. The audit views about the quality of aspects of the entity's significant accounting practices, including accounting policies, accounting estimates, and financial statement disclosures. The significant accounting policies and management estimates used by the Ealing City are described in no one of the financial statements. The city has a reliable accounting system that produces reliable financial information. The city has some accounting policies that have not changed over this year. The financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. In regards to difficulties encountered in performing the audit, we've noted none. In fact, it was actually the best audit we've had in years. Everything went smooth. It was quite a pleasant audit, and we're excited to be here. So, you know, thank you for what you guys have done. Let's see. Mistaken ones only, then those the audit leaves are trivial if any implications. I think everything was addressed throughout the audit. We had no disagreements with management. Let's see. We have requested certain representations from management that are included in the management representation letter dated earlier in 2020. And there was no additional consultations with management. Let's see. Any beyond that? Let's see. As part of the audit, we evaluated internal controls, policies, and procedures necessary. We reviewed your cash disbursement system, money going out. We reviewed your cash receipt system, money coming in. We reviewed your payroll area. Performed tests on your financial related numbers. Did a test on your journal entries. And these internal controls are to keep honest people honest, protect your employees, and detect problems. In regards to fraud, we take our fraud procedures very serious. We analyze the risk of fraud in the city. We audited your journal entries, asked fraud questions, and performed additional analysis. And for testing compliance, we referenced local laws, state laws as required by NRS three fifty-four dot sixty-four, and federal laws in regards to thorough EPA, EDA, and quite a few other areas. So we were quite thorough. So that is it for my presentation. In regards to the audit itself, if there's any questions, Mayor Mr. Bailey are more than happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for the CPI?
I don't have no questions, but no way to make a comment. I think as for the council, if you would turn to page seven and eight, the comments that are made in there dealing with the general fund increased our fund balance, you know, about four hundred and twenty-six thousand, some of their two hundred and thirty-two thousand of liquidization. But looking at that, that is way better than previous years. We really increased that. It goes down each one of the street fund, within the deficit of fifteen thousand, came out to twenty-eight thousand to the good. It goes all the way through all of our enterprise funds. And what I see that as a reflection of, I said it all along on even rent, your employees will make you or break you. I see, I think what we see here is, in my opinion, our employees trust management. They know we're going to protect them. When the treasurer says we gotta make cuts because of COVID, nobody likes cuts. They did it, they got the money, and got back in the flow of things. But I think our employees trust the management team we have going, they trust our staff. And I just think this whole budget, it's a reflection of the report, it's a reflection of good employees we have here. That's on those pages there, and I've got another comment once I find it, report the end. You know, that closure post closure as with financial thing. I don't know. The technicality there, just the way it is, and we'll define. I have, but probably lost it. Oh, and I just need an explanation on this. We take ninety-one. That's the schedule of being post-service provision for the mutation on fees for business Can I get an explanation? I'm not going to say what I think it is, but I might be wrong from what was in my past experience here. What does that page illustrate or tell us? Sorry, may I?
Sure. Ordinary. So as, as, I'm the manager with Kittington Christensen. That code section at the top, that three fifty-four five nine eight nine, requires the auditor to supply this information for inclusion in the financials. And it's, and you know, we just look at the population change from the year end and the CPI, and that's kind of how we arrive at that limit. Does that answer your question?
Okay. So, you know, they're talking business license revenue adjusted. Does this say we're, I'm not saying we're doing this, or maybe I'm all wet about this. Does this say we should have a higher business license permit? Or it says over/under allowable, so we're under?
Yeah, you're under. It says that, that's basically all saying is you're under the maximum allowable amount based on, based on this calculation of, which I think tries to isolate changes within the So I don't, I don't, it doesn't seem to me like it's saying this is what you should be doing, it's saying you're not exceeding this maximum.
Okay, so in retrospect, that is probably been fifteen years ago. We use this page to help us illustrate we need to increase business licenses, you know, if we'd be allowed to do that. I'm not saying we're doing that, but this one here says we're getting along fine in the long week. We could ask for more.
Yeah.
Okay, but why is that required by that? Kind of asking.
I don't know.
Okay, go ahead. I don't need to know no more than, thank you very much.
Any other questions for the CPI? There are none, or will you obtain a motion to accept the audit? Right, second. All right. Your motion, and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, favor?
I don't know.
Any of them? Thank you very much. With that, we'll move back to item seven for the public hearing. The mayor will recess later in the city council meeting for a public hearing at five thirty PM on the following topics. Item one, Councilwoman Beecher, city fire chief Stork, discussion, discussion only, approval of resolution twenty twenty dash twelve, a resolution amending the emergency medical services EMS billing rate scheduling. This is a public, this is a public hearing, so we'll have comments from anybody.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. I want to reiterate, I think the fees are too high. I want to remind you, the taxpayers pay for employees' equipment, and then they get the W nine. That is a stomp. What are we doing with all these funds? I've been coming to city hall for years, attended meetings. You folks have more equipment than I can remember. We need to scale things down. Business is not the best in the downtown area, let alone in the community. And if I'm wrong, I want somebody to prove me, prove me wrong. I have to tighten up my belt. You folks need to do the same thing. Those fees are too high. Period.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the second? Either on Zoom or in the room. During that, we will close the public hearing and move on to, and move on to item eight, discussion possible action items pertaining to the public hearing. Item one, Councilwoman Beecher, city fire Stork, discussion for possible action, approval of resolution twenty twenty dash twelve, a resolution amending the emergency medical services EMS billing rates scheduling.
I think we had discussed this on a couple of different stages, and while the rates are higher than in the past, they're, they were explained that they're bundled rates and more apt to be, to be accepted and paid by insurance companies. So this is the, this is the structure that we had decided to move forward with, so I'm comfortable.
Do you have any questions from the council regarding this, or the fire chief, or the councilwoman Beecher? Here now, call for a motion on a side.
So moved. So moved.
Second. Further discussion? Here now, all in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Very sort of word. We'll move back to new business. We're on item B two, Mayor Robertson, White Pine County, color health officer, Derek Coon, R and D discussion only, presentation on current COVID-19 pandemic status in the city of Ealing. We'll get back to some of the issues for the rest of town.
Thank you for having me. I apologize about my appearance. I got all excited, I ran home, changed my clothes, only to get called back to the hospital, and didn't make it home before I could change back into my clothes to come here. So I apologize about the jeans and T-shirt, that was not my intent. I'm going to show you more respect as a, as a city council than that. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. I appreciate everything the city has done for this pandemic that we're currently in. The mayor has been faithful on the radio, and his office and the rest of this board, your city council has been instrumental in helping curb the pandemic, ensure your support, and doing the right thing. So I do appreciate that. Currently, for those that you might not know, we have roughly three hundred and five positive cases of COVID-19, starting from roughly March twenty, I want to say twenty-third or twenty-seventh, somewhere right in there, up until today. Three hundred and five cases that we can directly trace to citizens of White Pine County. That does not include any repeat tests, that does not include anyone that lives outside of our county. So three hundred and five people in our county. Currently, we have forty-two active cases, differentiation between active and positive. Active cases are those that we are currently expecting to be in quarantine, and that includes their whole household, kids, family members, whoever lives in that house, we're asking to quarantine. That changes roughly on a rolling ten-day average. And so every, every day, people come on the list and people fall off the list. We currently have two people in the hospital as of today. We have four, put that in perspective, we have four, four COVID-19 beds that are at fifty percent capacity. The hospital does hold more than four people, of course, we have twenty-five beds, but we've designated a certain area in the hospital where we will treat COVID-19 patients. It is becoming harder and harder to place these patients as we go, or not necessarily just post patients, but to get anyone outside of Ealing to accept our patients. So if you have a heart attack, it's harder to get you placed. If you have a GI bleed, or you need services we don't have in Ealing, it is getting immensely hard to get these people placed. Recently, we, let's see, this Thursday, Tuesday, speaking with our head of our ER group, Dr. David Barnett, he stated that he spent about six hours trying to get a patient on a flight and find a bed that would accept and be willing to take care of this patient outside of Ealing. It's usually not that bad, but with this crisis, that's kind of where we're at. We currently have three deaths in our county. I think that's three too many. These are good members of our community who will be sorely missed and made a difference for each of us in the county and especially those who love them and, and were with them. As far as vaccine, I get a lot of questions on vaccine. The hospital will receive a hundred and forty doses of Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine roughly on December sixteenth, seventeenth, somewhere in there. We've been told we will get a hundred and forty doses. That vaccine was just approved just, oh, it's probably been three hours now by our Food and Drug Administration in DC. I listened to that hearing today, and it was kind of fun to hear experts in their opinions on the vaccine. Vaccine, I read the literature, about sixty pages. It appears in all aspects to be safe. It's faster than anything we've ever produced, so I understand people's gut reactions are nervous, but it's, it's been good. I'm happy to report that we are getting that, and we're looking forward to, to start that process. I would be happy to entertain questions, Mayor Robertson, or any from any of the council members you might have, or rumors you want dispelled, or clarifications.
I do have a couple of questions.
Go for it.
That three oh five positive and forty-two active, do those include the prison?
Those do not include the prison. So over Thanksgiving break, I was informed that we had ninety-five cases coming out of the prison. I have a spreadsheet with the names, and I talked with the warden, he denied it. However, let's put this in perspective, I didn't realize he was the warden over multiple facilities, and these happen to be prisoners from Lincoln County. I found that information out just yesterday. So the state had misinterpreted, I guess, who the prisoners were. So those are only our citizens, not, not prisoners.
Okay. And then also, we have two hospitalized right now. I had heard someone speaking that had just had a baby or something, but she had also tested positive, and she was being counted as being hospitalized, but she had had a baby, that's why she was hospitalized. But is she counted as positive, and this is all hypothetical, I don't know this person nor do I know her name, but is she counted as COVID because she has to be isolated? Is that the case?
If, if, I cannot, hip was a scary thing. Let's just say if it was anybody else and she was in our facility and was COVID positive at the time, she would be counted as somebody in the hospital with COVID.
Because she has to be in.
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's what, that.
She would just due to the isolation.
I understand.
I saw that on Facebook as well, and I just, I thought, what do you want us to do? Return the best we can?
Sure, yeah, I understand that, and I appreciate your hard work, and thank you so much, and I also appreciate your shirt, that's great.
Oh, my leg, sorry. Yeah, sorry, I'd rather be in a shirt and tie. Here we are. Other questions?
Yes, I have a question. As for the amount of shots that you will have for, for the virus and whatnot, do you have a breakdown on how you're going to use them within the county?
Certainly. So from the federal government, we are dictated or regulated on who gets those first hundred and forty shots. Those that, those first in line will be hospital personnel who are on the front lines fighting the virus. If we have any leftover, which I don't anticipate much being left over, they will then go to the EMTs, firefighters, people of this nature that are also putting themselves in harm's way as they interact with the public. And so that's, that's the first step, is we'll, we'll take care of what they call the essential employees or the essential healthcare employees, and then we'll, we'll start to deviate down. I don't anticipate a shock for the general public till probably April or May, but I could be proven wrong, so.
I read in the Los Angeles paper the other day, a breakdown, they show that even though if you're a senior citizen and can use that, prisoners in the prison follow right after our emergency, people might not, our first responders in there. As far as I'm concerned, do you rate the prisoners more valuable than the public who is working or whatnot? I don't understand how to go with that.
I don't know how that was determined, but in my understanding at this time, it goes healthcare workers, firefighters, EMTs, White Pine Care Center employees, and residents. And then it might open up to others. When they, from my understanding is, was they say prison or prisoners, in my opinion, they would be down on the list. The prison guards, however, would be higher on the list, right up there at the sheriff's office and the EMTs, because somebody's got to be left to guard the, the prisoners themselves. So I would agree with your, your assessment that that is unfair and uncalled for.
But I think what's, what's important.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but people on Zoom are having trouble hearing you, Councilwoman Beecher.
Oh, me, sorry.
Thank you. You're perfect.
Well, I think what's important to recognize is that you're not making these determinations as to who is getting, and no one in the county is doing that. Those are all federally mandated, correct?
Federally mandated, and then state mandated as well.
This is in a column, quoted, governor's social, in the Los Angeles paper that they reported yesterday.
Right. The, the hard part.
And that, that to me doesn't qualify as far as I'm concerned.
Right. There, there's many citizens in our community and the city of Ealing who I would put well above prisoners if I was my choice. So if I have any, I'm happy to do that, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the county health officer? We're on his report. We appreciate you coming down and for the work that you and your office have been doing.
I appreciate it. I appreciate your support. Again, if you have local businesses that need help, or you have questions, I'm a phone call away. I'm willing to bend over backwards and frontwards and leftwards wherever I need to go to try to help our citizens and to try to do what's best for our city, at least in my opinion, at least in our county, and try to keep us all safe and healthy and still having some fun while we do that. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item three, Councilman Allworth, White Pine County Tourism and Recreation Director Kyle Horvath, discussion only, presentation on Broadbent Park, community
Hello, everyone. For the record, Kyle Horvath, Director of Tourism. Jennifer Woolness in their packets for grants. The grants, do they also have the digital answers?
No, because she told me.
Just the, okay, okay. Well, then what I'm going to go ahead and do is I'm going to keep this one. I've got six copies, five copies. If you don't mind.
Not at all.
And then when I go through it, they can go through it as well. And of course, we have copies of these at the convention center, and I can email these to anybody who's interested in this particular packet right here. So I want to thank the council and particularly Jim for working with me on this one. I think doing a community survey at this time is really relevant. Downtown is, is picking up some momentum. You've got, you know, groups of citizens that are organizing and trying to further, trying to further the activity in the downtown. So we came up with this survey not, not knowing that they were about to open up the next round of snipperment grants. So knowing that that's going to open up in September, this is really, really relevant, that we've done the community outreach to see what they want. And I think what precipitated this was is you had two groups, one, one private citizen and the other one was the Main Street Association, who was moving forward with what their ideas were for Broadbent Park. But for the sake of community buy-in and really knowing that we're on the right track for what's best for the community, this survey was necessary. So I'm just going to kind of go through their, their front and back copies here. And the first couple of questions are just to kind of get an idea of where people's heads are at. The first one is how often do you utilize Broadbent Park? The number one answer was a few times a year, and then the second answer was a few times a month. Often and never were the two least answered ones. The second question is how important are parks to a community? Just to kind of assess to see where our citizens are in relation to how much they, they appreciate the parks that are here, and overwhelmingly was answered as important and very important. So I think that's a good sign for us to move forward. The next one, it kind of complements that question, but is kind of an interesting response, is even though you feel like parks are extremely important to the community, how often is Broadbent Park utilized by the community? And somewhat, on the lower end was what the answer was. So I think, I think that's no shock to anybody that a park as great as Broadbent has been underutilized, and we're trying to figure out a way to, to get more people down there. So the next question is we kind of dove into the level of importance that people have on, on certain specific things. So the first one is sports facilities and ball fields at Broadbent Park? And you can see the three answers right there, indifferent, important, and very important were, were answers to that. That, of course, is no surprise. But if you compare the answers to the next question, how important is it to have concert and performance facilities at Broadbent Park? You can see that the number of people answering indifferent went down, while the number of important and very important went up in comparison to ball fields. Question six, how important is it to have a playground at Broadbent Park? Important to very important, and I think that speaks to our families looking for things to do with their kids within the downtown. Question seven is how important is it to have picnic barbecue facilities at Broadbent Park? Park? Again, important and very important. The big question, the one that everybody has, has an opinion about is how important is it to have a splash pad or water?